It sounds like you're right out there. I mean, you guys kind of want everything, but.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll back up with you for a minute because the legislature and Governor Justice sent me a $2 million check for our new health department with our breaking ground on next.
They paid you, they, they complimented you with money.
There you go.
We had to make a bunch of calls to get that. And actually, I sent you that check.
Oh.
The governor's volunteers of the year recognized, grand wealth. So we, uh, we're working hard.
It is fantastic here. I mean, and just for a myriad of reasons, but I, I, I do think that you guys are getting ready to have growth problems. And growth problems are the kind of problems everybody wants, but this place has a, it has a real unique thing. And, and Hardy County, and I'm gonna sort of lump you in with Grant and Pendleton, right? I mean, and probably to some degree mineral if you really fit, but that's gonna be our challenge, right? Is these places are special because of who we are.
Yeah, keeping, keeping certain things like they are. That would, and that's what, you know, that's what we keep putting our planning forward. Because there will be no way, like Berkeley, you go and talk to Berkeley County people about growth, they're like, no, no.
Well, they get started before they had a plan. You're a hundred percent right. And like, you can, Berkeley County's incredible. Everybody wants to be there. They're killing it with money and all this other stuff, right? But you can just drive through Berkeley County and realize that like, there were things that happened that there was, there was no plan for.
And once it starts, it's hard to stop.
And it's because they have cheaper property taxes, right? And so they have, they have a lot of people that moved there and don't ever integrate into the community. They're just there to sleep. Those are all very, very exciting problems. I'm sure you guys are. Hearing about property tax policy as it relates to interstate travel.
Need our, need our young people coming back to Hardy County. Need you guys to be entrepreneurs coming up with ideas, fixing all these things. Cause that's what needs to come out of West Virginia. You know, you have all these things in our country that then, uh, innovations. We need innovation in West Virginia. That's what, that was, that's what we need to be known for. Innovation in dealing with issues.
How many of your old parents are in agriculture? So the important thing that you guys need to understand is that sometimes it looks like selling the farm to build houses is a good financial decision. But it belies a lot of the other things that happen at the end of that. And that's what actually happened in, in Berkeley, right? Is that they turned a bunch of agricultural production land into condos essentially. And short term, yeah, but long term, probably not.
Because those, those homes don't produce the revenue to actually.
Not forever. They do it in a, in a very short period of time. But they're also almost all 20-year homes, meaning they're not the kind of houses that y'all live in. Houses won't be there at all. And then you gotta start over again on a piece of property that you probably can't borrow money from.
And back then, the emphasis on, through COVID, the emphasis on supply chain wasn't as microscopic. People weren't looking at like, hey, we need farming, we need, we need food, we need, we need supply, we need production. COVID highlighted a big part of that. And now they're out on that potential revenue, that potential growth because they, they didn't have that plan. Like you said, they couldn't, of course, they couldn't foresee that. But if they invested in what they were good at, then they could, they could benefit.
One point eight. Then it jumped to about thirty million of that after COVID. And then when we finally done the contract, we get to three point six. Just to double the last three years.
Yeah, I mean, it's, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, what are you gonna do?
Well, we're busting, I mean, we're busting at the seams. You know, with the poultry plant coming in and having to bring workers because we don't have enough workers here. And that, that gets into housing, schools, you know, it just funnels down.
What also gets into immigration, it gets into immigration. I mean, you guys have, you guys are sort of running the gambit of every single, you know.
I bet we're the most diverse county in the state. I bet, I bet that we, they're like, there are eighteen languages being spoken.
All of our schools, probably not close. It'd either be you or Jefferson, but it would, it would be in that realm.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Uh, I mean, Pilgrim's is right now building a hundred and sixty-some unit apartment complex. Where their international workers work.
It is, yeah.
But that.
Well, I talk a lot, but I wanna thank you because this was very enlightening for me. And I'm sure it was enlightening for them if you take time out of your busy schedule to do what you're doing. It's, it's cool, man.
Always, I love being here too. It is, I go a lot of places that it's a little less fun. It's nice to be places where there's, we're coming back too.
Good deal.
You wanna get a picture with all the kids?
I'd love it.
Sure.
You think they can, you think we can put it up here?
Yes, that's right.
Sure, and then y'all be down here?
What if they have rabies?
Health departments here.
Yes, we sure do. Cause this is gonna be very difficult to get everybody up here.
You know what else you could do?
For F T C, F T, F T C is a robotic competition that challenges ninth and first day students to build, design, and program a competitive robot. In addition to the robot, students who, that participate on an F T C team also learn teamwork, how to spread the ideals, and a level set. And now how to build strong, lasting relations in your community. All this combined is what makes a successful F T C robotics.
One of the many things that works in the F T C challenge is the fact that they get a different idea. This year's game is post-center stage. This year's teams must use machine learning to identify specific lack of light images called April tags to navigate through an obstacle course and score special game pieces by pixels. To score, to score points, a team must use their robots to move the pixels into different specified areas. Teams can also score by making special patterns with these, with three pixels called mosaics. At the end of the game, teams may choose to score by launching a paper airplane called a drone into a zone outside of the field and/or hang from a scaffolding in the middle of the field.
And you'll have a picture of this year's field. Um, like every year, it is twelve by twelve field made of thrown tiles. Pixels will be collected from the audience side of the field and scored on the black backdrop to the back of the field or in the scoring areas in front of the backdrops marked with red or blue tape. In front of the field are the three lines that mark the, mark the zones to enter them in. The closest one to third is the next to second and the fourth is zone three. Each zone is worth a different amount of points. Um, and one of the biggest challenges this year is gonna be navigating through the scaffolding bars in the center of the field.
After reviewing the game and talking as a team, we came up with a strategy. We want to be able to quickly navigate to the bars, place pixels on the backdrop, form mosaics, and be able to use image recognition to help with navigation. We also wanna be able to hang from a scaffolding and launch a drone into the first zone.
To accomplish our strategy, we decided to build a robot that has a hand to open and close for transporting two pixels at a time, an arm to raise, lower, and hang from the scaffolding, a flywheel drone launching system, and two small cameras, one camera to detect April tags and the other to recognize individual pixels. Currently, we are working on several different design options and testing each design to see which one will be most efficient in playing the game.
To accomplish all of this, we need to continue a strong relationship with our sponsors. This year, our sponsor reward system will be a little different. This year, we're focusing on marketing for our sponsors. Each sponsor who donates at least $25 will receive a custom poster. The poster will depict their business name as well as their sponsor level. The sponsor level is determined by the amount of money that they donate. Twenty-five dollars to ninety-nine dollars is bronze, one hundred to two ninety-nine is silver, three hundred to four ninety-nine is gold, and finally, five hundred plus is platinum. We will give them a poster to display at their business, and we will also display their posters and their business names at our events and in our outreach materials.
The last part of our plan this year is outreach. So far this year, we've already hosted the first coding club for fourth and fifth grade students and have started mentoring the M M S robotics teams. Throughout the year, we planned to mention the M I S robotics teams, host the Zombie Room, Spooky STEM, host the Pancake Breakfast, a Paint Night, build and carry out an escape room experience, and host our second annual Color Run 5K.
Throughout the time that I've been in robotics, I've learned skills such as, uh, teamwork, uh, machine learning, and job repair.
F L L C is the first Lego challenge. It is the largest robotics competition series in the world. And it's designed for students ages nine to fourteen. In F L L C, we compete in four areas: robotic design, robotic game, innovation, innovation, and core values. For the innovation project, to identify a community problem and design an innovative solution. Core values includes character-related things like our STEM outreach and impact, teamwork, community involvement, innovation, and discovery throughout the season on competitions. Robot design is the evaluation of your robot's effectiveness and skill level. We're graded on your use of sensors, motors, and effective programming and coding. This often involves algorithms and equations. The robot game is your performance in a table game, which is like a tabletop obstacle course if you think about it. Your robot has two and a half minutes to complete as many challenges as possible and score points. The robot games autonomous, meaning all robot missions are pre-programmed and are reliant on sensors for re, for accuracy.
The season's theme is magic, which is based on arts such as theater, music, and movies. These are table game setups for this season with various missions to complete. The season's innovation project, um, is based on communication and marketing. We are to use technology and the arts to engage others and increase participation in activity we enjoy.
Last season, we got second place in the West Virginia State Robotic Competition. Because of this, we were selected for the W P I International Competition. Out of six, out of approximately sixty thousand teams around the whole world, only eighty teams went from fifty states and sixteen countries. This means, uh, second, we got second place in core values and we were top ten in innovation project. This means that in two of the four robotics categories, we were top ten in world, and we were top fifty in all the others.
Last year, we started an F L L E school team for ages six through ten. In F F L E, you explore and research a topic, building further, and putting mission models, and find a way putting, to put the mission models together using motors, sensors, coding, and further information. F F L E season ends in a state showcase and where projects are presented and feedback is given to help develop coding and engineering skills in preparation for participation in F F L C.
The local robotics program has expanded from six students on one F L L C team in twenty eighteen to today over fifty students between two F L L E teams, two F L L C teams, and one F T C team. And, and an after-school coding club at M I S. The student, parent, and industry demand these programs to continue to improve. Our programs impacted world as well. We have directly impacted sixty-three of the same students in section. Our STEM outreach events have served over eight thousand students introducing the new STEM activities and coding. With our websites and social media accounts, we have impacted over twenty thousand people. The pod has also allowed us to develop partnership connections with local or non-local businesses and organizations. We have developed relationships with over sixty local businesses in our regional world. Something that we find to highlight are American Watermark, which has provided us funding, materials, and mentors for our program. A M R from Watermark Farms and I N O dot com, which has provided funding, materials, and mentorship. And the Hardy County Community Fund, as you mentioned, has given us financial support and opportunities with community.
What I like about robotics is that you get to learn how to read, and you get to learn more about engineering. It's really fun to work with people and learn about action work and.
My favorite thing about M M S robotics is the technology aspect of it all. The coding, the designing of the robot, and working with computers.
So because of our team's success, uh, we've been given some really unique opportunities lately. Um, so some of those include, our high school team has been asked to be an ambassador team for the state of West Virginia because, um, after COVID, F T C West Virginia kind of fell apart, and they're trying to rebuild the program. Um, so they've asked us to be an ambassador mentor team, um, for that. Our team has been approached about being part of a NASA, um, project with, uh, Shenandoah University. We will find out in a few months if we were selected as a finalist for that project. But if we are selected, um, these guys will get to design and place a sensor on a NASA robot and use it to collect research. Um, so we'll find that out, uh, hopefully soon. Um, we were also approached by, um, Brian Hicks of the U S Naval Research Laboratory. And they provided us with a radio telescope that we're going to use to collect research when we become an official research site um, for part of the Delight Project, that's that radio imaging project. Um, and, uh, we've done a lot of projects with the National Youth Science Foundation. Most recently, they've approached us about doing a project with them where we design and test habitation pods. And that has Apple Naver habitation and Mars habitation. Um, so we'll be working on that later this year. And then obviously, uh, there's a lot of scholarship opportunity as well. Um, there's scholarships that are directly available through first, the program that we compete in. Um, and then there are lots and lots of STEM, um, scholarship that these guys will be able to, uh, they'll be eligible for because they participated in robotics through their K-12 career.
And in addition to all of the opportunities that they have, um, our students are learning skills that they're gonna use in their life and in their future careers. Um, so they're learning things like programming, building and design, um, engineering, mechanical engineering, statistical analysis, um, planning, teamwork, CAD modeling, which is basically 3D modeling on a computer. And so we really feel like our program is helping us to pick up our futures.
And we wanted to come back because you guys have supported us in the past, um, uh, both just in spirit and then financially as well. And, um, obviously, you know, they're doing amazing things. They had great success at the international tournament, second place in the world. Anchor values, top ten in innovation. Um, uh, our high school team has made it to the district championship, which is, uh, Pennsylvania, D C, Virginia, West Virginia, Maryland. Um, they've made it out of thousands of teams every year that we've been at B. So we, we're, we're experiencing a lot of success, and none of that happens without community support. And specifically, your all support on this past season. So we're very appreciative.
Thank you, and congratulations for making Hardy County proud, uh, with your accomplishments. Could we get a picture as you go out the door? I think we, we know where to go now.
Nothing real bad. Supposedly, our COVID shots for the health department ship Friday. So as soon as we get them, we're gonna open up some COVID clinics. We do have some for the uninsured, but it's just too big of a headache to split it. So when we start giving COVID shots, I wanna have for the insured and the uninsured. So we can take care of whoever's there. We have pneumonia shots in, in-house if anybody wants them.
Move it up to R S C.
Limited right now. Um, straight on, it's with, yeah, I got five. But if you're interested in one, get the girls, get the girls to call the health department. Besides that, we're, we're moving right along. I'm waiting to hear some good news about a groundbreaking.
But. How about lights, you wanna? Let's not go there.
It's not, it, it's not gonna change, is it? And I mean, we could talk all day. We're, it's, it's a problem that's just gonna keep going on because we can't cure stupidity. We just can't. We just, we just gotta make sure that we do the best we can do on following up to make sure we don't. Well, the paper's here, so I, I'm just gonna tell you this story real quick.
Hey, hold on.
No, you, no. I'm telling it cause you're here. But we had a, we had a child a month, month and a half ago that got bit by a stray cat. Fortunately, the parents were aware enough, they, they captured the cat, they killed the cat, and they were aware enough of rabies to contact the health department. And we sent the cat off, and it did come back positive for rabies. And the child got its rabies vaccine. The reason I'm telling that story is parents need to be aware. If your child gets bit by a stray animal, then follow up with physician, health department, somebody. So a case like that doesn't slip through the cracks. I mean, that case could have, you know, if they don't call the health department, and we don't test the animal, they probably don't get rabies shots. And who knows what the, the outcome would be for the child, so. Besides that, you got any questions? I wanna break ground.
Hey, Bill, I was getting my teeth cleaned, and, um, the young female dentist, Amy, her name's Amy, told me a story about, hey, they have a problem with children number two getting their teeth clean. And about three months ago, they lost a child who come in, couldn't do anything with her mouth. And, uh, they found out, you know, weeks later, the baby died. There were no teeth left. Uh, and so I started, uh, I had Morgan start a health column in the paper. And we're gonna have Amy start a dental column in the paper. You know, get your kid in. They, they weren't coming in.
Right, right.
Mostly because the dental insurance is hard to get.
Well, we got this new thing in the health department now. Um, I actually have two TVs in the health department. One from Hardy that for pacers watching, and the other is from a company that they just, they put health screenings, what shots kids need, effects of them shot, so on and so forth. And it just continues to roll from eight to four. Uh, and that's something we're gonna continue over in our new health department. Of course, I might have to get a bigger TV, but.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good problem.
Oh, yeah, right. Uh, when that groundbreaking ceremony, we say we should wait on a date, right?
Yeah, I mean, I gave, I gave Wendy the list of names that, you know, I think is appropriate from the health department.
You have any, you want us to go ahead and set a date?
I guess we need to talk to Mallie.
We need to talk to Mallie first.
Well, I mean, but we need to because, you know, I had mentioned inviting Governor Justice and, and some of the local delegates, which we're gonna do that, we need to get it on our schedule.
Would you like for me to contact them?
That'd be good. Try to at least get a date. I know it was up in the air with her too. She's gotta hear information, you know, it's nub, but it would be nice if we could get a date so we can start sending invites out.
But I actually rode, riding by Friday for some reason, I saw a Thrasher car there, so I pulled in and talked to Marsha for a minute. She had some gentleman I hadn't met with, that said they were somewhere around, and they decided they'd like to see the site one more time, so. That's all I got. I just got nothing, nothing to read. I'll get word.
Thanks for what you do.
You're welcome. Appreciate you guys. Thank you. All right, you're next, Sheriff. See ya.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Okay, G N R had five, Sheriff's Office had two hundred thirty-seven, Morville Police Department had ninety-four, and State Department forty-nine.
Appreciate, I like to keep track of this, type, put it over really busy.
I'm at two hundred, so I'm gonna do a pretty busy.
Yeah, wasn't that last month, I think we're close to three fifty last month, yeah. Did the time of the year. I, I kinda like going and have that most report. Had some good drug arrests and active task force in September. We had one federal plea, the name suspect Holly, federal court, three federal sentencing with Hickson, Ball, Talbot, and Lane. And, um, one state arrest for distribution of Marcois, grapes, and interdiction. Um, stop arrest of a guy named Ricky Sutton from North Carolina. Then the two counts of possession with intent to deliver and also possession with a firearm by conviction. So we're getting some good cases. We've got a lot of other cases out there yet, just waiting to be wrapped up. They've been really busy, the task force has all the drug cases. Getting a lot of, you know, big time dealers, now time, then it's maybe some other amount of state. It's part of what we've had going on around here, you know, we're busy with a lot of calls. We've had a lot of bad accidents here lately, track and power, couple track and powers of a vehicle down two fifty-nine. It's just, like I say, you can't, you're done with some of the stuff that causes these accidents. We've really been concentrating on doing a lot of rope, going down that area to try and slow them down. It's all over the county, and there's people coming to here, they just drive fast. I can walk in the morning, five thirty, four o'clock, work in the mays, being how fast they're coming down, which, I guess it gets to plants about hours in the morning. But I've never done that too awful much, more than highly ordinary. Hope that we start about getting our cars, but we still got, got the new cars, it'll be a lot of work for strikes and stuff like that. I'm afraid it's not intended to just drag it out even longer. We've already ordered all the equipment, the equipment, I'm afraid they keep dragging their feet, another year or so. To, you know, whereas me, that all the equipment that we've got ordered might not fit if they change the design of the vehicle by the time we get it. We gotta worry about that kind of thing. What Bill was talking about, about the rabies kitten that bit the kid, that's been one of my biggest fears of all these cats running all over the place. Figure out something to do them. I've had people call me, I got three calls last week just on that very problem. I went to one house in particular, it was out in the county, and I pretty much had to take my feet and scrape the cat out the way to even get to the door. There was at least seventy-five cats that are on that front porch that place. The neighbors around complaining about him getting on their cars, on their horses, character. Try and show them if they left some of his cats. They said he got rid of twenty of them last week, so I said he might have to do a little better than that. So it's a really bad problem throughout the whole county. Anything y'all need to ask?
How's our, uh, personnel with, uh, you know, the open position and filling it and what, what our other needs are there?
Yeah, we got applications, and we got five people with supply, and none of them's got any experience. And we're in the process right now, just waiting, um, regularly to finalize the dates. We're gonna have to get someplace where we can, but tests have to be taken online now. It's not like it used to be. We want them all together, that way you have some supervision, you have, they're not gonna have anybody helping or anything like that. So it's in the work, and also the promotional examination are in the work too, so we're trying to.
Still, still service test and take online?
Yeah, yeah.
There's some, are there some that are gonna be taken emotional?
Yeah, yeah, I think everybody's eligible to take the sergeant's test except one, I think you haven't done two years. And then we'll be tested for lieutenant. We have one person eligible to test, we have one person eligible to test for, um, captain. And then once we get close, I'll talk to you about personnel issues, you know, outside of presence of everybody.
Yeah, and just let us know on like salaries, whether we're competing. Cause I know this, this is a big deal, you know, with filling these, filling roles, like filling positions. It's a big deal. We have to, for one, what we can do is make sure we're competitive, you know, that that wouldn't be the reason someone wasn't applying.
Well, see, that probably is the reason, because that's what's killing us right now. There's a guy in Hampshire, kinda likes to live parties, working for the sheriff's office up there, would like to come down here, but they can't take ten thousand dollar a year pay, but have to come down here to seem like, y'all have been very helpful, really great. Been producing people's pay around here, and, you know, we're really thankful for that. But it seems like every time we start to get caught up, they dump a bunch more money, these other counties go around here where it just makes them own competitive again. I think I was missing the last meeting we were in here, even like Randolph County, they offer a fifteen thousand dollar sign on, but somebody signed on down there, and that's a guaranteed work two years. And then after the two years, if they don't get any kind of trouble like that, they stay on, they'll give them another five thousand dollars. And they're paying more than what we do. How do you even get these funds out? Plus, you look at the hardship it's on these guys. You've got actually seven people out there working the road, because your resource officer's not working, right? Our task force. resource officer's not working, right, our task force guy, he's constantly working, he probably works more hours than anybody else, but he's not answering the calls, you know, like these guys are, they're just bombarded with cars, have to make up for, you know, the manpower shortage, which TD especially, overrun most of their calls, it seems like. But you put that on top of not being paid very much and being working, that is, there's really not much of an incentive for somebody to come here with those. This is pretty dangerous, you can't even work if you're out there by yourself all the time, backups long ways away.
Yeah, I definitely think it's something we need to be thinking about, uh, yeah, thank you for, thank you for when you evolve out, because you have to be thinking about that.
Well, you look at Hampshire County, I don't know what their budgets are, they must have a lot more than their party county does, because they're running like twenty some deputies right now. So how do you compete with that, you know, we run twenty-four hour coverage with seven, so, you know, they're just, they got four or five people working every shift, you know, they're out there by themselves. It'd be nice someday we could ever get to that, and it's gonna be a hard place to get to.
And so will be the first foundation, uh, a, uh, law enforcement is accepting use for that first foundation, plenty, of course, so that's always something to keep in mind.
Well, see, this is a really bad idea they came up with, it would have no certainty, but a great idea, I never understand why they craft it the way that they did. You can have a deputy that retires, and it's drawn his retirement, and he can come back to work as a field deputy, provided it's a department that's smaller than five people. I have a lot of discriminated against the bigger de, in bigger departments, but we can pick out people who want to collapse.
Wasn't for that, and that's part of the state code?
Yeah, they changed the law on them, I guess, last year.
Maybe you should put that as a, uh, as a bill for that.
Or legislation.
Yeah, I don't know why they're punishing, it's not a great big sheriff's office, you know, punishing the, the, white mark.
You're, you're big enough that you're getting punished, you're not coming under the five limit, so you're getting punished, but you're not out to twenty or anything, you're in really hard position, yeah, 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 it's creating very hard, okay.
Well, if you have anything else, I'd say I appreciate all of you done to make the time in here.
Thank you for all you do.
Hey, Sheriff. There's, uh, a program in the Army and the Navy, uh, that we used to use, uh, retirees from the services go straight to law enforcement. Have you?
Well, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was a really good point. There's a guy just getting ready to retire from the Army, that's been in thirty years, and he's a picture of health, you can tell, he's smarter than he can be, he's about six foot three, and he looks like a marathon runner, and he came to be taught three or four times, or anyway, I can get him hired as a deputy. He can't, he's too old, he's fifty-one, he cut off age forty-five, which is insane.
Was that a state, uh, restriction?
Yep. Yeah, because they got some.
They're going to the military.
Killing this, why would they?
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's like everything they do penalizes us, and he'd be a great guy.
Right, he would, yeah, yeah.
You can get fifteen for twenty years out of guys like that.
Oh, yeah. Well, they obviously, you're out here before long, I'm still hanging in there.
You'd think, I mean, like, people are working longer now, it just happens across the field, so why would you have it at forty-five and not at?
I think that's the physical part of it, ridiculous.
I think one of the good ones, Brian, to introduce a bill, trying to get that fixed.
Yeah.
And he ought to understand that, he could do it anybody.
Yeah, he should. Well, there's a lot of things that they could do that makes sense and wouldn't cost any money today, and benefit, you know, all the police agencies, because if they keep getting harder and harder to hire police.
Well, you know, he, he might even fall back in his same, because one day he might be in that same poor deal.
Yeah.
But he'll be too old, and yet he's not be old enough for retirement, I mean, you know, for social security.
If somebody retires right at twenty, like in the Marine Corps, uh, they could fit under your restriction?
Yeah.
Would they make him retire in four years?
I know, they, I mean, they, yeah, they.
They come in.
I would say once you're in, you'd be in.
Yeah. I think once you're in, you're in.
Yeah, so. And all the eight years.
A big good question to ask. I mean, you're not gonna get any O-gangers, but you're gonna get enlisted folks.
Well, they can still, that would work out alright, because the eight years of service has to equal seventy, you know, crawl forward, pull retirement, if they came in, say, at thirty-eight, you know, they would easily make retirement, they could still work once it passed retirement age.
Right, right.
And what's the, what's the maximum, is it sixty-five cutoff?
I'm not sure, I haven't looked at it, I think it might be seventy-two. I didn't, it's under civil service, and you couldn't work past seventy-two, there, I just haven't checked the sheriff's office to see. Let's just.
I'll work that up here, yeah, next, might be in Tuesday.
Those would be very practical ones, that, like, I know we can't quite understand why we wouldn't have changes, I can't really understand why there wouldn't be changes, and they get easier for us.
Yeah, and you know, you get those military people, they're only disciplined, regimental, you know, police agencies are paramilitary, they fit right in.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Only problem with the military is they're using the military in our jails now, they have to do like the NPs and stuff, I know they, they have to do it at least a year.
Well, see, they use the reserve people, people that are already retired, doing free, but often, we can pick them up.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Yeah. Alright, well, thank you all.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Call me, you sir.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, well, do you have anybody waiting for us out in the hallway?
Also.
If you wouldn't mind, take a look, Sheriff, and see if there's anybody.
No, there's nobody out there.
Nobody out there?
Just give me a call if it, you get down, stop while we talk to you.
Okay, um, are you going back to the office now?
Yes.
If you wanna send Tammy this way, tell her we're, we're, we're working right in.
Alright, I'll get her over here.
Alright, we've got a, a couple of things here, um, we've got the, that's why I was asking the angel was out there, uh, Bergdahl from Pilgrims regarding the, uh, information about the overpayment of the ambulance fee. And we've gotten the information that we had, um, they are asking or requesting a, um, refund of overpayment, um, for, uh, the past few years, and, uh, we did have some questions, uh, for Angel about the, uh, numbers of employees, and that they were counting, uh, some of the, we know, or understand that, uh, for several years, which may have included some of the years that, uh, are cited here, uh, that they may have been using contracted personnel, contracted, uh, services, and our question, or one of our questions is, you know, were those folks that were here on contract, uh, counted as employees? And I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question, but, uh, obviously, if they were, if there were contract employees there, even though they were, uh, contract employees, they still were providing the same role in service, uh, that employees at Pilgrims might be. So, that, that was, that was one of my questions, those folks counted, and I understand, again, it's my understanding that still today, the, uh, cleanup crews for the plants are contract workers, and my question is, today, are they being counted as employees? So I, I would like, I would like to know the answer to that question, maybe for, uh. My only other problem was, there's a few years didn't pay on the claim. Yes, and, and how do we, how do we handle that, that's the other. Of course, they, those took one week, I think the refund should offset and take care of the years that were paid.
Well, when they actually gave the original number, were any of those, did they have contract employees back then, would be my question, because they originally gave about two thousand employees total for the whole company.
Yeah. Well, she, they, they're breaking it down between the fresh plant and the kill plant, and cooked plant.
Yeah.
Fresh plant, yeah. It's, uh, I guess, if she wants to gain any grounds, maybe. Yeah, I mean, maybe we can, can we, can we send an email back and ask for some of those questions, Wendy, for you? Well, that might be. She's not gonna. It's, it's actually her apartment, because you know that's what much about it, she does. Yeah, it's racist. Maybe we just hold on to this. Take this, we're getting your confirmation.
I think table it, we get.
Alright, I'll make that motion. Alright, so, second, alright, any further discussion? Proceed to vote, all those in favor, say the five saying aye, aye, three ayes, the ayes have it. Alright, Tammy, thank you for your patience, we, uh, we've had a, we've had a very informative morning, and, uh, it's been a good morning. Yes, ma'am?
Well, a lady that has, um, that pays hotel tax, uh, her name's Shailene Parsons, she had written a letter asking me, she said, I'm recus, requesting to receive a full refund for the year two thousand and twenty-three for the hotel tax, because the Burbo and Airbnb, you know how they started collecting it as of January of twenty-two? She was also submitting some payments, but she also submitted payments for booking dot com, which they do not collect automatically. So, I went back, I pulled all of her payments that she had made to us and compared them. Now, you know what they're being paid from the problems that we've had before, we can't really tell who they are paying for, but we just have to assume that they are paying for these particular people. But there was, she did have a few in there that, um, her amount was not correct, because some of them was, um, booked through booking dot com. Now, if you would choose to refund this, she's saying she overpaid, uh, five ten fifty-four. So when I went through all of hers, it actually comes to four twenty-nine seventy-two. And she's not asking for twenty-two for the year twenty-two, she's just asking for twenty-three, because she rents January through July.
And we did see, it prob, from your records, it probably did get paid, right, by Airbnb?
Well, yeah, we have no way to determine, but I would say yes, and also, I, I went through the, it would appear to me that it did.
Yeah.
Except for the little discrepancies of the ones that she miscounted, that was through booking.
Um, so based on your recommendations, probably leave it three hundred or four.
Four twenty-nine?
From what I s, yes, from what I see, it's definitely the four twenty-nine, and not the five ten fifty-four, but it's four twenty-nine seventy-two, actually.
And she's up, she pays what she owes, like, this is not, this is all current, right? Like, it's current, and as soon as she saw it, she informed us of it, we weren't trying to communicate and not getting answers, right, that's.
No.
Okay.
No, she just, I think that it didn't even dawn on her that they were collecting that, and then just as soon as she said.
Are they paying that? On that, yeah?
Well, we can a hundred percent tell that, you know, because they submit in a lump sum payment with no identifiers at all, but
No way to break down.
I do believe that they are, and the reason why I do believe that is because like the statements, this is, I don't know if you can see this, but this is sort of like a transaction history thing, and that's what it looks like when, uh, the Airbnb takes a certain amount of money from someone. It, it's in the transaction like that, and then, uh, it shows to them, it doesn't come to us, but she had actually sent me a copy of that.
Okay.
Shows that, you know, that's what they're saying, and it all added up, except for those few.
The two bookings from the bookings dot com.
Yeah, and each one of the documents has that same paper.
Okay, yeah, I think that, yes, uh, I'd make a motion that we get refunds, Shailene Parsons, four hundred twenty-nine dollars, seventy-two cents, uh, according to her request, but the act, you know, but our corrections to the request.
I'm second. Alright, you can drop it, you're second, any further discussion? It's your, 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 you're saying to bear that out, with what she's.
Yes, I went back over, man, the only difference is the ones that was in booking, and she specifically told me, she said, I'm only paying booking, but I think when she got her totals, she just got them accidentally added in there, because when I took them out, it comes to exactly that amount.
Alright, any further discussion? Proceed to vote, all those in favor, say the five saying aye, 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 three ayes, the ayes have it. Anything else?
No.
Thank you for looking in and having all that information, yes.
You're welcome, thank you all.
Alright, um, GIS bylaw revision, does anybody have that, Greg, send that along? Bylaws revision, we did, we did move the, did you have that? Okay, uh, there was, uh, some changes made to the bylaws, and I thought they could be, I thought they'd be here today, uh, and, uh, since we don't see them, I don't think we can take any action since we don't have the doctor. Do you remember generally what it was? Yeah, um, Paul, do you?
You're always still secretary, we don't have our secretary position, right?
Right, we did away with, uh, in the bylaws, did away with secretary position, making the, uh, clerk of the planning office basically the secretary.
Right, just on that, then the other one was dealing with, in the original ones, I think they gave it protective day, that the means would be, and that came out.
That came out too, but we'll, we'll just hold off on that one, so, uh, we had the document before, that, that's what I remembered.
I think there's a couple, there's a couple of little housekeeping.
Alright, uh, we'll hold that one over. Alright, um, the elevator, uh, protective service, preventative, uh, service contract with Shenandoah Elevator, it's been, uh, presented, and, uh, the amount is, um, fourteen hundred? Fourteen, yeah, fourteen hundred, I'm gonna tell you, it's up fourteen hundred. Saw it, I can't remember. Remember the total. That includes a visit four times a year, um, there's their populations for the hourly wage, rate, wage rates. Okay, so, option A, option one, and option two, where it thinks, uh, what it costs per year, in case there is. Does that include this, uh, seven fifty for the inspection, Sharon? New inspection?
Yeah.
At seven fifty, and then, is that in overtime? And then if it does meet service, then there's a wage rate, so, overtime. Yes. Increase five percent a year in the duration. The last company we had was like thirty couple hundred a year, wasn't it? Yeah. And they haven't showed up for like three years, so this is right about the end, unless they're gonna come quarter day, and inspect the elevator. So, do you need more? And still, I don't see a. Total there, but that's what. Yeah, I think that was. Maybe I was doing a math on it, seven hundred fifty. I think it's not fourteen, I think. Fifteen hundred.
I mean, that's, yeah, seven fifty, that's, that's here, it says for inspection, but it does, should be well, they will coordinate that inspections with their policy, so, I'm thinking.
I'm not sure.
We're not, where'd you get that?
Not this, like, that, I think it's not, no. I guess, all right, sixteen fifty, right? You want to listen, um, well, he, four quarterly payments of two hundred, uh, twenty-five dollars, which, I guess you'd know, hundred and nine.
Plus the seven.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars a year to inspect.
So we're not, we're looking at sixteen.
Yes, yeah.
I still had price on the other, plus the other, never even, did he, he sent them a notice on cancellation of the time.
He did, he sent him a certified letter.
You know, really nothing, really because it's not coming.
Those are the paymarks, you're staying divided. And I mean, there's, you know, we, there, there's labor, we pay above and beyond that, you know, there's some prices, but that's what it is, sixteen fifty. And it's five-year agreement, yeah, twenty, October one, twenty twenty-three to October one, twenty twenty-eight, so five years.
Sure, this was.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm at conclusions, but, yeah.
Second, uh, it's been moved in second, we accept the Shenandoah Elevator, there for the contract for service on our elevator, any further discussion?
Quick question?
Yes.
Who's gonna take her place? Are, are Shenando?
Shenandoah Elevator is the one.
Uh, we're. You're re-upping them?
Yeah.
Okay, that's who, who takes, I'm not sure what.
It was like, it was like, it was a pretty hard name.
Okay.
All right, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify saying aye, aye, three ayes, the ayes have it. You have the original?
Yeah.
All right, okay, thank you, all right, um, next we have the, uh, no, let's do the simple one first, uh, the bat and pigeon, pigeon remediation, uh, Wendy had contacted the, uh, courthouse improvement grant, uh, office, and we submitted that grant, uh, to be considered for, uh, the next year, while we would like to have had the confirmation of the receipt of the grant by the time we could get it done this year, that doesn't look like it's going to happen, so we're gonna have to wait until we get confirmation of receipt of the grant, but we did apply for the grant in the amount of about.
If you look at your, if you look at your sheet that I prepared for you all.
Okay.
Um, I submitted that, um, on Friday, and I submitted an application for fifty thousand, well.
Fifty thousand, okay, um, and we think, hopefully, by March, maybe, it would be, it would be able to be applied to the date. It's basically the date that the biologist, uh, tells us, you know, that you can work on these things, you can't work on them just anytime, because they're having babies, you know, you can't.
Iberian.
Having babies, but maybe March, it seems that March might be the date.
We should know something, um, in January about the grant, and then what Melvin and I had talked about was to go ahead and contact, if, if we get whatever monies, um, to go ahead and contact the, the bat remediator, bat people. Um, and then get them, get on schedule for them, so, because I know that they were gonna fit us in, if we could get the money back for this year, but I don't know how busy their schedule is for the twenty-fourth, but I figure sooner the better, you know, sooner we can get them.
All right, uh, we've been requested by several to designate a smoking area, uh, at the courthouse, and that area, I think, has been identified as outback, um, and there was a discussion of shelter, uh, some kind of, I forget the cost on that, that had been proposed.
I did not get, I know that, I think that we had talked about, um, one of them, like, carport stuff.
Yeah.
And I didn't, I didn't get the cost, because I don't know if Melvin.
I think one, seventeen-nine, uh, eighteen-nine.
That's probably about what they, you know.
Less than two thousand dollars.
But then you also, also discussed, if it's gonna be here in the parking lot, they do have a little bit of shelter.
That was what was discussed, that there's already existing one there, and we just need to buy that, um, this, uh, yeah, the.
The ashtray.
Ashtray. Yeah, they were like seventy-five.
Yeah, I would have had and bought the ashtray, because the one that we had out here, it caught on fire and it looked horrible, so we got rid of that one and got a new one, so, unless you guys wanna price on that carport shelter, initially, we had discussed.
Well, they already got one, huh?
They already have an overhang, I think, you know, uh, because that carports won't take up, and we don't have that much space out there.
Well, not where the outdoor units are for, um, for the hidden air, for the ductless splits, not for parking at all, not for jail, um, police officer trash, I mean, that, that part is very congested through there, so.
People know now that that's a designated spot?
I have not announced it, so I can whenever, and I'm sure that we'll probably get some flat, but, you know, we have public officials that have said something, you know, directly to me, and I've had several people to say that it does not look very special to see security staff and others outside on the sidewalks, or on the.
We are gonna get probably flat, I'm sure we will, but have to make a decision and get flat from one side or the other, and then count the spot, that's only reasonable, you have a designated spot, it's not where people are gonna walk through it. That'd be twenty feet from the door, twenty feet from the door.
And we don't have to provide, because a place, I, because I did check with Bill, we do not have to provide a smoking place for them, but he said it would be nice, that is, we did, so we are being nice. The last thing we want is someone to be asthmatic and have a asthmatic, you know, attack.
I still provide a replacement variant, if you walk around to the park door, you know, with the hospital.
No, you can't smoke anywhere on the grounds up there.
And I, you know, have we passed the, have we passed the, basically, I know inside, have we passed the smoking ban on courthouse grounds?
No, I don't think so, Gray County was, that was a big discussion in Gray County, but as far as, I know we don't have anything.
I know there's a thing in personnel policy about smoking, but I think if that's revised, it also needs to be tobacco products, because you get these people vaping, and they think it's not tobacco related.